You'll read about it on paper next week.
Stacy Williams and I live in Lincoln and I just, I would like to know what the plan of action is to correct the inaccurate tax bills and the things that have not been assessed? And what is the timeframe to correct that?
We'll get people out there and find some of these. Some of them will end up on this year's tax billing. Will we find every single one of them in that time period? Probably not.
Timeframe?
Next few weeks.
Okay, because we brought 17 places to attention and nothing's been addressed as far as we know. I don't know about 22. I know about five and 12. I don't know about, I don't want to misspeak, but I don't know that they've been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know over time how this has gotten this way. I do know the situation is real. We have to deal with it.
As I stated in the budget hearings with the budget committee, that I rely on the code enforcement department to give me the permits when they're issued on an annual basis. When I get that list, I go out and review them for completed projects, non-completed projects. I have done that, as is my responsibility as assessor. When Amanda took over as code enforcement officer several years ago, she came to me with a stack of permits we didn't even know existed. We've been sifting through those as we can, but we're very aware because people have come in with homestead exemptions. They've come in asking for addresses for properties we didn't know exist. And when we asked, we asked what happened, why there wasn't a building permit, and they said, we called the code officer several times. He didn't return our call. We got frustrated, so we decided to build anyway. When you don't have notification and you don't know things are happening, you cannot go out and follow up on them appropriately. That was a period of time that this code enforcement officer was doing this, and it was four to five years. So we have four to five years of activity that we don't have accurate records of. So we're doing our best to find it. We're doing our best to follow up on it. And when we get notification, like for instance, I have a homestead on my desk that I am following up on this spring to see, because you can't have a homestead without a home. There's no permit on file for this person. I don't know how long the structure's been there. I can tell you it probably started out as a seasonal dwelling, but I can assure you that had I had a complete list, they would have been followed up on. And as far as Stacy saying she went out and found, yes, she took her own time and went out and toured Crooked Pond in part thoroughfare lane, which we've had a lot of new development. And we went over the building she found, and there were a few that were not on the list, and I have a follow-up on those. But the majority of them, I did have listed. So I just want to say, I'm not going to sit here and have it implied that I'm not doing my job to the best of my ability, because that is inaccurate. By our ordinance, if we find somebody who didn't get a permit and built the structure, we can assess them a building permit fee in charge of double.
For the building permit?
For the building permit. That's all we have in our ordinance.
We should really look at that, because there's a lot out there with no permit, apparently.
I think there's probably several, but like I said, you know, we did the best of our ability. Wade and I went out when he was code officer and canvassed several areas that I knew were problem areas. And we did pick up quite a few properties that I did not know about. So it's not a matter of not doing the job. It's that you have certain people that have certain responsibilities. And if one part of that loop is dropped, you can miss a significant amount of construction.
But you realize people, they're hot in the right place trying to put money on the books to help with the taxes.
The results of these budget hearings and everything has been grant. Who else has a Stacy Williams that goes around and shows you all the properties and says, Ruth, you need to look at this. Do you have this, this, and this? No, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you that there are a lot of residents in the town of Lincoln that have recognized the workload I have. I have David Moison coming in and scanning files. I have Fred Lysen Threat that is helping me get caught up on the mapping issues that we need to address. Stacy going out and looking at properties. I can't thank them enough, because quite frankly, the load I'm carrying, I don't get out as much as I would like. So thank you for letting me address that question.
I think, great, we're going to catch up on these, Kathy Moison, Lincoln. I think it's great. We're going to catch up on these properties. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands putting these taxes on the rolls is not going to make your taxes go down or your taxes go down. The only thing that's going to make everybody's taxes go down is this budget that you're talking about tonight. It's not the number of people that are on the rolls. The budget determines what the taxes are, not the assessments. People get confused about that. Putting everybody on the rolls, yes, it's going to help make it possible, because there's more people paying. But when you do that reevaluation, that's going to even things out. It's just going to even things out equitably. It is the budget that determines the taxes. Any questions? Thank you.
God, we need to have something to take a look at an ordinance change to deal with that.
I guess my issue one is. When we talked, Ruth, assessing was a full-time job. And now doing economic development, it seems like that's been a priority. So how are we going to catch up if she's doing both? They both seem like full-time jobs, and it's one person. I just question, are you going to gain ground?
I think that's why we hired somebody who was supposed to be Ruth's assistant 20 hours a week. And because of his talents, he's doing some other things. But that's all up to the personnel manager, Mr. Manager.
And he is available to move what you ask and what you want him to do.
Guess so, guess Kathy's, I don't agree with that. If you need X amount of dollars, you've got half the people paying. More you get in there kicking in, it should take one of the payments down.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I wasn't implying anything, but one thing that people need to realize, this council is managing bodies this time. If you remember several years ago, it was stated glass back when the lady was interim town manager, that all the properties in the town would be assessed in a timely manner. I can concur with what Charlie was saying. Mr. Dewey wrote up, you know, we are the government, governing body this time. And you know, the buck stops with us. And if someone promises the council that they're going to do something, and they're not, then that reflects bad on us, the people that elected us. So I would just like to keep everyone mindful that we are a voice of the people and you know, I think sometimes we put too much emphasis on people doing different jobs outside of doing what their sole responsibility is. I do know if you've spread too many, in too many directions, you're not good in one direction, so. You?
I just want to say, I didn't, I didn't speak to Ruth under the bus. I just wanted to get this straightened out, and if she needs more help, and if she needs more help, I hope she gets it. Thank you.
Thank you. Another Stacy Williams. Anyone else?
Item number three, suggested motion moved open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral written comments on the proposed FY 2026 municipal budget in the middle of the wall. Anyone have any questions on the FY 2026 revenue budget?
I question, how much is in arrears owed to us on the EMS revenue account?
Second billing and he is successfully collecting.
But the reason I ask is because this document shows that we're 237, $230,000 below what was anticipated. So my question is, are we 230,000 in arrears or?
With EMS, one is the fact that we collect EMS after the fact, by the time the billing actually happens. They're sometimes out of the quarter of the year that we're in when the incident happened. Sometimes we're actually out of the calendar year in which the incident happened. So there is a substantial amount that will come in, but is after.
Right, but over time, that lag should even out, so it should be the same lag, so.
Yes, if we cease operating EMS on January 1, a year later, we'll know where we really were.
So and the reason asking for the arrears is, are we overestimating our revenues for next year?
Melissa wants to speak.
I have to, at the end of every month, gather all the data that the billing company sends me and do a direct entry into this, and I'm about two months behind on the direct entries. So that is through, I believe, March, that number. So there are some more deposits that I have not keyed into Trio yet. It's not an automatic thing. We're not collecting everything here. We're collecting a little bit here. So.
And do those direct entries. My focus these last few months have not been my direct.
But based on what you know, is this 500,000?
500,000 should be.
That's a good number.
A good number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
At least, I pocketed it off.
What's the number? No, no.
Right at the top, revenue type police and fire revenues. And I was questioning the EMS revenue account, which is line two.
So 580,000 is a good number for revenue?
Yes.
Want to open revenue budget? Anyone on the town manager budget?
Few weeks prior to giving me my draft budget. It shows wage increase of $30,004 for the town manager. Then we got this one. We, I bought this one a week ago, like Ashley did, and it still shows a $30,004 increase. And I know when we voted to accept his year contract, I'm just kind of surprised to think that that number is still there. Is it going to be taken out of the budget?
Well, that number is, if they, if they go with non-union 5% across the board, that number contains the town managers.
Yes, but it also contains the hours we use on Ruth Arnold, and it also contains the money we pay it there.
But he did not get an increase in his wage in his new contract. If it goes 4%, that number will go down. If it's the non-union people, then we'll hold on that percentage. But right now, there's 5% in there for non-union people's increase. That's what people ask.
Right, I'll explain it to them. Sure. And also, in fact, the revenue, as I will find data first thing in the act, but they've said that they went to contract 30 days out. That's been like 60 days.
I don't know that answer. Do you, Melissa?
Yes.
Yes, I have.
Ruth is nodding yes. She would have receded it.
Can you tell me that, what that level was?
$30,000.
$30,000.
And they're planning on making another payment. They're planning on making another payment in the near future, first year.
Thank you. Anyone else on town manager? Town clerk, anyone on town clerk?
Chairman, moving forward. Way that we could have all the wages in one line item. Because it's very confusing for the layperson to figure out who's making what. I mean, it's just, some's getting out of care, some's in this, and some's in that, some, some salaries are being paid three different ways. You know, so I myself would like to see one line item. But then you can say, well, so maybe the trick is to set up a separate table that is a combination of all the wages added together.
I already have that in this budget. If you look at the detail for the personnel budget. That is how I figure out my FICA and social security amount, is I have a formula. And if you look at the managers' request for FICA social security on page 87, if you look at that manager's request amount, it's 4,608,291.
I guess, would they?
Yes. So I do have to put a formula in there in order to know how much FICA we need to budget for. Currently, the council amount's still the same. That would be the total wages, but if you look just to the left of that where it says manager wages, that's the amount. That's my original wages amount, that 4,565. And beside that is the manager requests, and that's the town manager's wage line items.
And a manager request of 4,608,291.
It should, yes, it should say town manager. I just have to have a place to put that formula. And there is one for the council amount as well, but it's on the other side of the sheet, so it doesn't print, but I can move that over as well.
How is total wages less than the town manager request?
The total wages were the department manager request, and there were a few corrections that had to happen. Booked, so that has been corrected. And then the manager's request for the pay raise includes in that as well the wage adjustment line item. Total wages are based on the department manager's request for wages. I could, I need to relabel these, so it is a little bit easier. So that was, that first one would be department manager request. The town manager request is the one that says manager request, and then I can move the formula for the council over, so it can be printed on here as well.
Can we also, on all of these, Melissa, from everybody's budget where it says,
Council approved FY 2026, council hasn't approved anything. I just want everyone to know, we haven't approved a thing yet. We're in the middle of budget hearings.
Yes.
So we need to change that. That's.
Well, that's how it's going to be when we print the books at the end.
Understood, but it isn't right now. We haven't approved anything, and that kind of makes the public go, oh, why have the meetings? They've already approved it. So. Mr. Hannington, does that help in personal? Okay. You're welcome. Anything else on town clerk? Anyone else? Move to finance. Does anyone have any question on finance? And I won't say it every time I turn the page. It's on, it's on every page that we've already approved this, so. Okay, we will now go to assessing. Does anyone have any questions on assessing other than what we've already addressed? Yes, ma'am. Only got one of them.
We were told that it would take three years or more to get a reeval over the whole place. And it would be $500,000 to $600,000. It's my understanding that we really don't have any money budgeted for that, and the budget committee did ask for $100,000 we put aside for that. So I would like to know the plan of action and how you're going to attain that money to do the evaluation if we have nothing put aside. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
When we get an assessing at the end here, that's yet a bit away, will we have enough put away at that time? It's quite possible.
But we're putting away $50,000 this year.
I think that's.
In my belief, did we put away $50,000 last year?
Correct.
So it is being worked on. We're not going to do it all in one year, and this is more a need, a year of, we need, not what we want. So that's what we're, what we're trying to stick with. And until we get industry into this town, that's probably what every year is going to look like. We need, not what we want. So if that answers your question, yes, Cap.
Have the RFP gone out for the reevaluation? Yes, so we know, when do they do that?
They do back on the 13th of June.
Which is before this is voted on. So we'll know how much money.
I don't know how you'll know a cost if they're not going to do it for three years. I don't know how you'll know. I know what you'll get for an RFP, but I'm sure there's.
Depends on how the RFP was written.
I'm sure there's going to be a line in there saying, individual cost per year could change. So, you know, I, right now, I think putting away, it's a council decision, not my decision, but I think putting away $50,000 this year is probably going to get us to another year. So that'll give us 100,000 in the kitty. And I just think, like I say, it's, we got to address the things we need right now. We need public safety, we need ambulances, we need town office staff, we need assessing done. Help, help for assessing. We need stuff like that right now. Yeah, you've got a paper right there. They just gave it to you. Should be right in front of you. We get unassigned, we've got. Looks like fund balances are But as I understand it, these are January numbers. We haven't counted the first quarter of, as much as we're into the second quarter this year so far. So those, those could be a lot higher, maybe not a lot higher, but a little higher, so.
You know, I have to interrupt this, Chairman. I understand this here, but I know, I mean, how much money is the deep department that left over from last year?
I don't have that number. Do we have that number?
Because I do know we bought, bought dump truck, dump office. 60,000, and then Dennis said we could have another 40. And, and undesignated, you know, undesignated money that we had to spend, just that one department. So our, all the departments, how much? 600,000, 500,000?
I can't give you a number, because we still have two, a month and a half left in the fiscal year.
And, and we got to be careful, we'll use the last year's money. I know we did with the police department, we used it for a software program that lowered our police department budget almost $4,000. But that was because we didn't have that position that we had budgeted for. It wasn't filled. But monies that don't get spent this year will go back into our unassigned fund, which then, when it comes budget time, we can apply some of that to our budget to lower the taxes even more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. There's your reserve accounts also standing. Yes, sir.
A reminder, how many years are we away from looking at actually having to pay for the reassessment?
Three years, so reflecting 50,000 a year, we're still going to come up short.
Three years, so reflecting fifty thousand a year, we're still going to come up short.
It's going to take them two years to conclude it, so what they usually do is they have a payment plan. Where once they can make a deposit. And then when they get so much done, you make another payment, and you do not pay them. All of it until you're satisfied that they've done the job in the end and delivered it when it's set. Because if they don't deliver it, when they say they don't get it done, when they say there's a penalty for not doing that.
So that, when we'd have a payment plan, we wouldn't have to have five hundred thousand dollars right then.
Certainly not, you're not going to give somebody five hundred thousand dollars and say, go do it, you're going to, you're going to make sure they do it. And have it built in.
Chairman, I want to piggyback what council, uh, Street said. I understand we're going to go out for assessment. Moving forward, are we gonna just stay with the status quo, are we gonna ramp up the assessment that we going forward? Are we, are we gonna just? Let them do it?
Manager and the, the assessor have been working on a plan.
Okay.
And they, I think you just answered that, that within the next few weeks, we're going to be working on getting the ones right now.
Yes.
That are off the rolls, on the rolls. And then moving forward, we're going to be having that, that done. So they know what went wrong.
Yeah.
And I think it's being addressed.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Anything else on assess? Code enforcement, anyone have any comments on code enforcement budget?
Yes, sir. Code enforcement, when we're doing this, the. Advertising marketing to get new people here for staff, does that fall under assistant budget value like that? We know that we're working to try to get a new code enforcement person. Is that? Included in this in some way, or is that a separate, set in a separate place? The advertising is not particularly expensive, it isn't a whole lot. Is there other expenses besides advertising that we have for trying to fill a position like that? There is my life work, that's right.
Police department, anyone on the police department budget? We were going to apply some money from last year's budget to this year's budget for. One of the pieces of software that the chief had requested.
Yep.
Which would have cut that in half, it wouldn't be seven six ninety two.
Correct.
But it's, it's still there.
I thought I had to do so.
It is zero zero sixty.
Was it an under zero zero one one? I think I've got under equipment making. It was under zero zero one one, that number that we used.
So what did you put it up?
It started out at. And it is now down to twenty one two seventy.
Software shouldn't be on the professional membership.
But that's what, that's what was recommended by the manager. That's not necessarily what we were talking about, kind of last week about.
Right.
The, the software.
So where is that, is laying?
The software is under professional membership, because it is kind of a, it's a professional membership. Software, so like that's where it fits best in the, in the budget, so that's why it's there. But, so. In. The budget committee, it's. Basically, we talked about being able to take the half of that, pretty much, and. Put it in this year's budget. And then that way. There's only seven thousand seventy, seven thousand seventy one twenty would be in this year's budget. Pretty much cuts that in half.
And Chief, that's zero zero one one, is that?
Yeah, down at scheduling software, the other software, so combines those two softwares together. They're both by the same company.
So each one of them were sixty nine ninety five, correct?
Yeah, because that's the initial cost.
And we were going to pay one of those out of this year's budget.
Pretty much, that's how it would work. Yeah, yep.
So that's true, what would?
So what we could pay out of this year's budget with the company was seven seventy four ninety two. And then basically, next year's budget would be seven thousand seventy one dollars and twenty cents.
I do see the town managers are taking those of those programs out, and it doesn't look like when I entered the. Uh, the seven thousand seventy two dollars that I added it into that, so that line would actually go up to twenty eight thousand three forty two.
That serves their one law.
Correct.
Twenty eight thousand.
Three forty two.
On equipment maintenance. I had an increase of thirteen thousand six sixty eight. Instead of seventeen thousand three forty three, I had that written in my book from last. Thirteen thousand six sixty eight. Manager across twenty thousand six sixty eight. And it ended up an increase of seventeen three forty three, but we spoke of an increase of thirteen six sixty eight.
I don't know about that. I don't have it.
I had that written down and then crossed it out. It looked like it was supposed to be a decrease of that amount, but I don't. Have any notes other than I wrote it down and then crossed it out. I'll have to go back and listen to the.
Yeah, I don't know if any, I don't have anything taken out of that.
Somebody said something. And then. There was a little bit of discussion. So I'd have to go listen to the minutes for that.
We talked about clear, that was in professional memberships.
You get thirteen six sixty eight, okay, so. Cool, let's got it.
So that's the. It looks like. The material for firearms training is the difference. And I think there was a discussion of where to move. The equipment for, for materials for firearm training.
No.
Because it is a seven thousand dollar difference.
No, because that, that wasn't a different line item before, a different line before, that was where we maybe talked about that.
Yeah.
That's what we talked about, because that was in a different line, so we talked about. Why it was such a big increase, well, it was because. Firearms was under training, which made no sense, um, as far as. Professional about, it was under professional development. It made more sense to be in equipment maintenance, because it's buying ammo.
Can we look into that Melissa, thirteen six sixty eight, because tools have that written down.
I think that's what it was, I think it was, was the, we got confused on whether or not, and we talked about that.
There was a discussion about that firearms.
That does, that does. Spark my memory.
But I will re-listen to those minutes, just to make sure that that's what it was.
Anyone else on the police budget, Kathy Motion?
What is the increase in the wages?
What is the increase in the wages?
The increase in the wages?
Fifteen two sixty.
And in what, what is the increase in the wages for?
What are they for?
Meets the union contract.
Right, so basically, everybody's in the union contract but myself and the administrative assistant, so basically, they're in their last contract year, so basically. That's what we have to.
Okay, so this is a projection, what it's going to go up to, because you.
I have it all divided out too, if you'd like to see that.
Okay.
Basically, what each person would be.
I'm, I'm just, I'm curious, because when the budget committee went through it, there was no increase there.
Okay, so I can.
And you should have known about the contract at that time.
So what we did, so originally, what I put in there as the school resource officer was what our percentage of the payment, right? We changed that because we, we, that's revenue. So we're getting money from the school for that, so our full, the full amount of the school resource officers in there, that's why you see the difference.
Okay.
So that's why that's higher than what I requested, and what the budget committee is because they, Melissa and the manager talked about. Changing that so that it showed that we got revenue from the school, and then basically, we would get reimbursed for.
Okay, that explains it, thank you.
Did you get that?
No, I don't listen when you're.
Oh goodness.
Yes, there I go.
Can, can I bring up one thing about the wages, just, just to put it on, on the radar, so that you guys know about it, so. Obviously, my salary and, and the administrative assistants aren't the only two wages that aren't union contract, right? I looked at what administrative assistants make for the police departments, and our administrative assistant makes way less than, than most police department administrative assistants. We're talking about a position that, when we hire them. When I did it in Old Town, they actually took a polygraph, because they saw sensitive information, they saw things that. Most people aren't going to see, they need to be trusted. And now we've added to her job with all the, the. Video work, so she's more than just the administrative assistant, she, she does a lot. And really. We should really reflect what other administrative assistants are making in the area, as far as police department administrative assistants. And I could tell you that when I looked at it, and I, I did quite a few, it was between twenty five and, and thirty dollars an hour. Was, was what that was.
So the administrative assistant down there is not doing clerk. Work, so to speak, the administrative assistant is doing more, is what you're saying?
Yeah, they, they're uploading things to Citrix, their, which is the, the system for the court system. They're doing all the video stuff now, and I mean, you know, when we move to body camps, that's going to be a huge, huge increase in the amount of things. She also does the fire department payroll, she does our payroll, but then she does everything else as far as. The backend stuff, so that police officers can be out on the road.
Is any of her wages in the fire department's budget?
No.
Very little, like fifteen hundred.
Very little, yeah. But she does all your wages. I would think a wage study would be something you could look at for that position, and present that to the council for, for consideration.
I, I agree with Mr. Chairman, because if she's spending twenty percent of her time doing fire department stuff, they ought to be.
Or. Yeah, it's probably not that much.
She's doing the monitors, she's doing.
I, I just look at it, what, what other administrative assistants are making in a police department, and she's well below what that, what that average is.
You wouldn't have to bring out of a hundred percent the first year.
No.
You could, it could be incremental, but it would be, if we looked at a wage study maybe in, in that position, for what that position's doing.
So the lowest one I found was like twenty five sixty two. And that was Old Towns. And I. The highest one was like. Over thirty five, it was, that was a little, even I talked to the chief, I go, I don't know how you do that, but.
We know the community, though.
Yeah, we do. But yeah, so certainly, I think, you know, and that's where I thought was starting at, at that twenty five, at least. Got her.
She's well over twenty five.
Yeah, she's at twenty right now.
Mr. Chairman, how much of the increase is that, a wage increase? Ten percent, twelve percent?
Twenty four, twenty four percent? Yeah.
Like I say, you, the council can discuss it, once we see a wage study, the council can discuss it at our next meeting. And go from there and see what we want to do. I'd like to have the whole council be in on that. Thanks, Chief. Anything else on police department? Fire and EMA budget. Anyone to speak on the fire and EMA budget?
I just, I think that we need to find a way to get. The reimbursement from health insurance and. Medicare, that increase, how, we don't have any control over that, but there's some way we can communicate with our congressmen and. Senators.
See, the state legislature just voted not to fund the hospitals, right? Not to pay, not to pay, they want the work done, they don't pay for it. So.
This is an active discussion in the legislature, I'm not at all convinced they'll do anything in this session, but this is a statewide problem, certainly not just us.
Right. The next. The next item is fire station, anyone on the fire station? Kathy Motion? Step right up.
Well, I was not waiting for you to tell me this time.
There you go.
Um, what was taken out of the buildings and grounds maintenance to make it, I mean, I'm happy that it's down, I'm just curious what was removed?
Buildings and grounds, because we put in specific levels for repairs inside above the yard.
Okay.
Yeah, we found out the roof wasn't as punky as we thought it might be, that was an inspection.
Okay.
But the increase this year is a new. Gas boiler.
Okay, thank you.
And last year, we had six hundred eighty five thousand six hundred fifty dollars for revenue. That's with the income from state and from all of our work.
Which are still at eighty five percent, not at a hundred. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the fire station? Utilities and municipal services? Anyone? Melissa, how close are we on the electricity? We think that's gonna go up a hundred and forty-two thousand? I mean, up twelve thousand seven twenty-six?
Yes. Every year, there's an increase to our utilities. I average, I believe, I did a three percent increase. And it usually, doing that three percent usually gets us close on the budget.
And we already know about water and sewer. We already been told what that's gonna be?
Sewer has not gone up and it will not. Water, I do not know. I'll tell you, the sewer, I know because I'm on the sanitary district board and we did not increase rates.
But we think we're gonna have an increase in water of fifty-three thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars?
I believe I said something last week, last week about the hydrant fees. We were not at, we were not booking the hydrant fees correctly last year. This is actual hydrant fees currently that I have in this budget.
And that's set by the state?
Correct.
Anyone else on utilities and municipal services? Public Works, anyone on the Public Works budget? Dennis, where, where do we have the, the piece of equipment for the tailgate? That's in capital. And what's the number in capital?
I don't know the price of it right off the top of my head. I wanna say eleven thousand, but there's a variable there because we can trade our old sweeper at a value of sixty-five hundred, which means we have to produce sixty-five hundred to obtain this piece of equipment.
Mr. Chairman, can we sell that sweeper for any? Eight grand, ten grand versus the sixty-two hundred trade within?
I've been, I've been told that it's worth about seven thousand. That's an old piece of equipment and it's worn thin.
That's on page ninety-six if you were looking, John.
Ninety-six?
Yes. And it is eleven thousand that he has for the tailgate.
We're asking for eleven thousand, but we only need sixty-five hundred.
That is correct. I put in there eleven thousand so we could talk about whether we would trade the sweeper or not. If we bought the piece of equipment outright, it would be eleven thousand. If we use the sweeper as part of the payment and trade, then we would, we could change that number to sixty-five hundred. And I do have an agreement in place for that.
Did we put that out to bid, to sell it?
We did not put it out to bid. I did shopping around to see what it was.
Don't we, Melissa, don't we have to put that out to bid?
Um, I'm not sure about when you trade in.
I thought we were gonna sell it and use that money towards a.
No, it's part of the deal.
Okay, trade, trade, you know, selling.
No, we're use that as trade towards the purchase of the tailgate spreader.
That's still sixty-five hundred dollars. We gotta come up with a tailgate conveyor.
Correct.
That's something we absolutely need this year.
We've had to do a lot of shoulder work in the last couple of years because of the heavy rains. It takes up a lot of time with a tailgate conveyor. I could send less guys to the job and get twice as much done.
We keep hearing it's gonna save us money, Dennis. We haven't saved money on anything yet.
I think this, I think this will lessen the time spent doing this type of repairs.
Still gotta compact the road and grade it.
She said we can get sixty-five hundred for the sweeper.
That is correct.
Wouldn't that leave forty-five hundred to make eleven thousand?
Maybe. I hear a calculator over here.
So we're going from, well, I just doodled it over here. It went from eleven thousand to forty-five hundred.
That, that could be an arithmetic error on, due to my weak arithmetic skills.
That's based on the trade of dollars, correct?
That's correct. I've already had the, the salesman come and look at it.
And you have it in writing, we can get sixty-five hundred for that sweeper.
I have a deal in place, a written deal in place.
Yeah, it would be, we'd have to pay them forty-five hundred dollars, not eleven thousand.
That is correct.
Would you like me to change that?
No. And I know you don't need anything else on your table, but can you keep track of how much that saved us so we can, I can sure do, justify that, for that expense? And I don't know, I'm only one voice, so it's up to the rest of the council whether you will go along with that or not, with us forty-five hundred, not eleven thousand.
Yeah, that's, hmm, that makes sense.
Nope, they're trading it, it's always. You're not selling it outright.
No, we're trading it.
Anybody else on public works? Thank you, Dennis. I gotta go back to the fire station, the fire and police for capital. Sorry about that. I went right by it. And it looks like we're, in the last meeting, we were looking at two hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance. And its manager request was seventy-two thousand for a third ambulance.
I am, I am imagining leasing.
Leasing, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Considering the fact that we're right where we are with the hospitals, when we sold the liquor contract to pay off all the hospitals, is it necessary moving forward with the third ambulance?
Well, we have, Mr. Brown explained that in the last meeting. There's, I think, about three hundred thousand dollars coming in from the other communities that we're servicing. And if we have wanted a fire and one has to go to another community, then we don't wanna wait for one to come back from, from Lee, from Wind or Chester. And I think that was why Chief Brown explained it that way. And like I say, with the contracts that we have right now, it's about three hundred thousand dollars coming in revenue for, for servicing these other two communities.
I understand that. But if we're gonna be, how much revenue from the hospitals? Thirty percent?
I don't know from the hospital, honestly.
So I mean, if, if, if they stop tomorrow and we don't start getting paid until February, I mean, are we gonna be upside down that much more?
Well, I don't believe the hospital pays us. I think the people that are being transported pays us, Mr. Manager.
That's correct.
You can, yeah. I know that, did I read in the paper that Matt O'Mcaggs starting that ambulance service backup?
I'm under the impression they're contracting with Lee.
With Lee, okay, yeah. But yeah, it's a, I, I understand that the people in your hall and pay you. It's not the hospital. So, hospitals aren't getting paid by Medicaid. So. And we do have to replace a jaw of a life that's thirty-five years old in the fire department. And then on the police department, we had a deal that the police chief came up with on vehicles. Right now, it costs about between sixty-eight and seventy-two thousand dollars for a new car, letted, everything.
Yeah, that's all right.
And right now, we can get five new Cruises, all letted. All, all we have to do, I believe they all have light siren, everything, brand new. Eighty-one thousand?
All right, yeah.
A year, all let it, all, only thing we have to do is tune the radios, correct?
Right, yeah.
So, not interrupt you. So all the monies that we spent in the last two years, so we're just gonna move forward and continue to get leases?
Well, what we're gonna do is, is the manager had the idea that to save the mileage that we're paying everybody to travel, that we take, we have three good vehicles, that, correct you?
Yeah, probably. I don't know.
Maybe.
One has, you had the mileage already written down.
Yeah, yeah.
Ninety thousand, one had a hundred and something thousand, but we're gonna, if we decide to, the council decides to, find those out so code enforcement doesn't use their own vehicle anymore and they're, and they are not be a pipe mileage, that if we have two clerks need to go to Augusta for training, they have a vehicle that we're not paying someone to use their own vehicles for mileage. The assessor will be using a vehicle that they can go all. Dennis already uses a vehicle that frees up the truck to, to go. So that's kind of the thought. It hasn't been decided by the council. That's kind of the thought, that we wouldn't be buying new vehicles to try to save that mileage. We already own these vehicles.
And if I can add, the lease isn't like a lease when you get done. You have to buy it. It, you're basically buying it for a dollar. So at the end of that five years, we own those cars for a dollar. Then we can turn around and those are gonna have value. You can either trade those in or use those for, for town, town vehicles.
Well, you're basically buying one completely outfitted car a year instead of having to buy two or losing an engine in one with ninety thousand miles on it.
I mean.
You know what I mean? So I kinda like that idea. I do know that we should put a letter out to our local auto dealers and tell them what we're looking at for lease and see if they would have something as good or better.
Yeah, I, I will say that that's gonna be the only tough part because the person that's doing it does everything. So they're doing.
But that's what, that's, but we, that's what we need to tell.
Yeah, but they're gonna buy the car, they're buying the car from their company. They're gonna do the lettering, they're gonna do all the install. So that's, that's the big thing with that, so.
But I, I still want our local auto, auto dealers to have a shot at it.
Yeah.
And if they can, good. If they can't.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I got one quote from, from one of, one dealer, so I mean, some of them don't even wanna deal with.
No, not with all the radios, the light siren, everything, you know, it's, there's a lot, painting it, putting the stickers on, the whole thing, so. But I, I kind of, it kind of intrigued me knowing that we could get five new vehicles. We could fill another need by cutting the mileage out. We probably won't cut all the mileage out, but cutting mileage out that we're paying code enforcement, assessing clerks going back and forth to Augusta, the classes, cutting that money out of the budget versus buying a used or a, or a secondhand car for a lot more money and putting more money in, in other budgets. That was the only reason I was attracted to that position. Anything else in capital for the police fire? Transfer station? Anybody like to speak on the transfer station? Kathy Motion?
What is the increase in buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds maintenance is monies that we had erroneously put into a different line item last year and we corrected that by putting them into this line item.
Which line item did they come out of?
I think they were in the capital last year.
Yeah, it was in capital last year. It, it is, it does not qualify as a capital expense unless it's over ten thousand dollars and has a lifespan of five years. So therefore, it should not have been in capital. It should have been in the regular budget.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on transfer station? There's some storm drain maintenance. We just bought that big vacuum and sweep bowl deal. We still need fifteen hundred dollars in storm drain maintenance because we have other, we have other monies in, in capital for storm drains.
The fifteen hundred dollars is for buy storm drain grates, bricks, things like that to rebuild them if necessary.
Have we used that in the past, that money?
Yeah, yeah. We've done well in the past few years. We, we were able to buy some items in bulk. And so we saved a few coins that way. Bricks don't have a shelf life. I would buy a cube of them instead of twenty or thirty of them. You mentioned the vac truck. We're very pleased with that thus far. We haven't done any basing yet, but we plan to do this summer, but so far, it's done well.
But where did we have that? I mean, we used to pay quite a lot of money for that.
We did. That wasn't capital. We took the whole line item right out.
We used to pay twenty thousand dollars a year for basin cleaning.
And that, with that new machine, we don't have to pay that twenty, but it doesn't reflect it in our budget.
We didn't pay it last year either. That's why we took it completely out.
We budgeted for that last year.
We may have budgeted for it, but we didn't use it with the anticipation of taking possession of the back truck. But I don't think we budgeted it last year either because this truck is two years late. It's took two years to get here. We anticipated having possession of this last year. And so I don't think we budgeted that twenty thousand last year either.
Melissa, can you look at that last year?
I'm looking right now at storm drains. Was it in capital then?
Capital.
There was nothing in storm drains last year either.
We removed the line this year, I'm fairly certain.
It's a zero, but it's there, I think.
Anything else on transfer station? Landfill, anything on landfills, bud? Anything on the social services general assistant budget? Cemetery box and recreation. Cemetery box and recreation. Cemetery box and recreation. I do have a question on um rec equipment, fifteen thousand dollars. Is that playground equipment? I think I asked this last meeting. I wouldn't think we'd need much playground equipment after the hundreds of thousands of dollars we just sunk into the playground.
Capital.
Oh yeah, the, the truck.
Yeah, that would be.
See the truck and the mowers, okay. That, that should be moved down a line, so it doesn't look like that's equipment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Zero, 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 eight, part-time recreation, and then zero, zero, four, four, cemetery maintenance. And I'm gonna be presenting later um down the road. Now, can we contract this out any cheaper? And as far as cemetery maintenance, can, can someone explain to me what that entails?
What page you on?
Uh zero, zero, well, it's beyond page nine of here, John.
Page nine.
Uh line item zero, zero, four, four, cemetery maintenance. To me, I look at that and it's like maintaining the blocks and whatnot, so.
So going by what Ron had in here, um under the cemetery maintenance is the grub prevention, which he, I believe, did contract out through Eric Bay. Um I believe he's had that done in the past. Um and then the stone repair, he has under there too, for ten thousand. There is a company, um I was actually working on that today because he was dealing with it before and while I was gone for a week. So I have an email out to them, trying to get them to contact me, kind of what they have scheduled for us, like if they got us on the books. Um because he has them potentially for June and then possibly coming back to go through and maintain the stones. And do you have a question about the, was it part-time cemetery too?
Well, I, I understand we hire a lot of, a lot of students, but uh me, I think we could probably contract the bone in the puppy house as cheap as that.
Some of it is students and then some of it is uh a couple other employees, one is part-time with us, part-time with Public Works. Um and the other one is, does a lot of the um digging for the graves and stuff like that.
But I guess it wouldn't be any harm in, in
Put it out the bid.
Putting an RFP together and seeing if you could come correctly cheaper.
We, we wanna do it pretty soon because uh it gets right away.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the only reason I bring this up, I mean, we as a legion probably spend excessive four hundred hours a year just maintaining markers and, and we you know, putting them back on, and markers that had been taken out by damage. Luckily, we have a, a veteran sticker on marker, so we know where to put that marker. But I mean, to me, it's just.
But we addressed that last year with things getting broken, we addressed that. You remember?
No, we, we did, but I mean, could be doing better.
Well, that's, I'm sure that, you know, that's, they're, they're trying their best, but we did address that last year. I don't think you were on the council, I think you were speaking.
Yeah.
But we did address that last year.
No, I understand, I, I just think that we ought to look at it.
And even if we don't get it done for this year, we could look at it for what it would be for next year, so. Anything else on cemetery box and recreation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Library budget, anyone? And we have had a savings at the library because we have a, a gas furnace now instead of an oil furnace. And I believe the fire department is not gonna be a gas furnace as well. So we saved, I think we figured that out last meeting, how much? About half, half the fuel, yeah. Anybody on the library? Okay, personnel. Mr. Manager, have we hired any new personnel besides the part-time person that we? Or is there anything in a budget?
No, no additional people.
No additional personnel, okay. Anybody on personnel? Council?
Who we insured with fires are worth as far?
Main Municipal Association.
Now, do you think that we could go outside of Main Municipal Association and get that cheaper?
Try, if we're going out to bid for health insurance, but it's not gonna be in this budget.
But we did last meeting, we asked to go for health insurers bid to see if we could curb that massive bill. Anything else on personnel? The airport budget, anyone on the airport budget? Counsel?
Excuse me, what is summer rep?
They do some of the mowing and.
Well, that's important for airport.
And we're gonna look into what a small building would cost to be located where you wanted at the airport? Yeah, well, we come from the full council, but, but rather than have it where it is, if we could have it where you wanted it, and then we could have a pilot's lounge in the right place, the.
We're, we'll be in the fifth cycle again or the grant cycle again.
Yeah. Yeah, we may get a grant for it, yeah, okay, thank you. The debt service budget, anyone on the debt service budget? Two of these are going away next year, which one of those, Melissa?
Uh the Public Works Garage and the Fire Department SCBA.
So that'll be seventy-four thousand dollars, it won't be in the budget next year.
I would assume that less may be more equipment, more SCBAs, but hopefully not quite as much as we had to have this last time.
Anyone on the capital improvements budget? Anyone on the five-year capital plan? Anyone on the FY two thousand twenty-six tip budget? I do have a question, Ruth, on the tip budget, did we take uh things that we were paying for last year and put them back in the regular budget this year? Like we were paying for, for um like half wages and?
We, the budget is exactly what it was last year. And as I said to you, and the only thing that might happen to it is when we figure the mill rate and we get the actual amount that's in the budget, I'll go through it and I'll cut by priority. And as I said, the first things that will go are the discretionary things like uh the events, they asked for an increase this year. He's done very well offsetting that, but that, that will be looked at. And um some of the other things, like maybe we push off the gazebo project another year, but the economic development budget will stay intact.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else on the tip budget? I don't have it, no. How much have we set aside in this budget for the five-year capital plan? I didn't think so, that's why I didn't have that. But we haven't set aside a penny for that.
No.
Okay, that's why I.
When you pass the capital plan, as it stands with the country, it's not commed.
Right, right. So we haven't set aside any money for that at all. Anyone else on anything to do with budget? Kathy Moish.
So a couple of the corrections and shifting alluded to audit type things, like that's not a capital, that's a this, that's a that, does that mean that the audit results are imminent?
Yeah.
As in, when?
I can't tell you when they're going to get it to me, but it is in their final review with their people, it is not in the hands of the actual individual auditor anymore.
Okay, have we paid them for that first audit? Okay.
We will pay when we get the audit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I assure, I have a question on page ninety-six, the one-ton dump truck.
Sure.
Does this mean that the budget is passed, we're gonna be trading two dump trucks in to purchase a one-ton dump truck?
Dennis? That is the proposed uh plan that we would like to do. We have two trucks now that are ready to cycle out of the, uh, out of the rotation. Um and we could be well-served with a one-ton dump truck. And so several of the people in that uh industry have told me that, yes, we could put a deal together, um something along those lines. Trade two of the single axon dumps, and we'd have to put some cash in and get a one-ton dump truck in return.
I just wanna bring into the council's attention trading two pieces of equipment for one, that tells me in years past, we've purchased too much equipment. If we're gonna trade two to get one, you follow me? I mean, if I'm trading two personal vehicles in to buy one, I'm getting, I mean, I had two personal vehicles.
Just if they both wore out.
And we have an F-five fifty, right, an F-four fifty we could be using versus the one-ton dump truck. And, and Council McCarthy said at the time, a one-ton dump truck is a penalty heavy enough to plow gravel road. I mean, I can contest firsthand, they're not, I mean.
Are there any life left in those two vehicles that you have over there?
There's, there, there could be a short bit of life left, uh maybe one of them, maybe a one year. They're, they're rotten out, they're, they're rusting away, is what really boils down to.
Yeah, they passed, they, they.
They did pass the last inspection, uh one of them did pass the last inspection. We kept the other one on hand um for parts purposes. The, that model truck is about ready to be cycled completely out of our fleet. And so we don't need the parts truck anymore. We don't need a truck there to rob a mirror off of or a door or whatever, because we don't have the, that model, that style truck anymore.
But you have two of them, one of them's passed inspection.
Correct, in the last inspection, last October. For what we use it for, for what we use it for.
Okay, but it can plow dirt road.
It wouldn't be my first choice, but it probably could in a pinch.
But you can't plow dirt road with a one-ton dump.
No, but we wouldn't be, that wouldn't be the purpose of the one-ton dump. The one-ton dump will be more for parking lots, things of that nature, and also getting material and men, men back and forth to the job. That's why the, the uh dual cab pickups are such a value to us, because like I said, one, one truck with four men to a job site, whereas if I had to send them with the dump trucks, it's two men and two dump trucks to get there to any efficient way of traveling.
When we, when we have the council final look at the budget, you're welcome to, to look at that and explore that some more and see if that's really something we wanna do.
I mean, I've, I've, I've been a opponent trying to maintain our equipment. We had, we had a pile truck for twenty-four years. Every other year we took the body and the wing and the sander off it and sandblasted it and painted it. Twenty-two years. That's prime example, I mean, if we only use an equipment with eighty thousand miles and it's not serviceable, shame on us, because everything is so damn expensive today, we gotta do profit maintenance to it. It's no more than washing things out or taking, that's why we hired a mechanic, is just that, you know, so.
Well, that's why we entered into the leasing philosophy, is to keep new equipment in the shop. Um and our lease agreement is very similar to what the uh chief of police is selling. We get a guaranteed payment uh trade-in value on those trucks when we term, and, and we also have the option to buy them. And so with, with that philosophy, um we have new equipment, uh well-running equipment in the shop all the time. And we're not in the business of making money, so we don't put any numerical value on our equipment being on the job. But we have to at least consider that, when a truck is broken down and it's sitting in the garage getting worked on, it's not out doing its job plowing the snow, or whatever else we want to do.
But are you saying we're also moving out of the idea of even having, owning trucks, removing towards leasing mall?
I think that's what we are moving towards.
Okay.
We've had very good luck with the lease program.
We can show, we need to show what we're saving for money with the maintenance side of this.
If, if we look at the budget, we can see the budget lasts three or even four years, the maintenance costs have gone down considerably.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dennis, anyone else? Come over at seven twenty-eight P M. I am for suggestion motion, move to adjourn the meeting. Dan?
Second.
Morton? All the favor? Five zero.